Okay, good evening and welcome. This is the April twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting of the school committee. Call the meeting to order five twenty. This meeting is being both audio and video recorded. I would ask that please everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, equal, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, roll call Samantha, if you could start, please.
Pamela Blair Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Sarah Trullio.
Gordon Smith Superintendent of Schools.
Gregory Thompson.
It's an all.
William Strother.
Assistant Representative.
Okay, thank you all. I have meeting minutes for approval. I take a motion, please.
To approve the April seventh, twenty twenty five executive session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Amy, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. That carries five to zero.
To approve the April seventh regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Sarah.
Second.
Second by William, discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. The motion carries five to zero. Samantha, thank you for those. Committee and subcommittee communications. Sarah, would you like to start?
None at this time.
Okay, Antonella?
No.
Liam?
Not at this time.
Amy. Emmanuel, bring us home.
Okay.
Thank you.
Two weeks ago, uh, the high school had assembly by five, five eight. And it was basically a substance abuse uh, assembly. I really liked the approach of it. It was way different than any other uh, substance abuse talk I had because it wasn't more of like, like a personal experience. It was more focused on decision making. How your decisions should align with your goals and how drugs like don't help with that. Also, two weeks ago, uh, high school hosted their second uh, Special Olympics event where we had people from the middle school, high school, and a few different schools around the area participate. It was a really nice uh, Sarah, it was a really nice event that they had and all the kids had a lot of fun. Um, I also had the opportunity to attend the two hundred fiftieth uh, celebration of East Long Meadow. That was a really nice ceremony. And then final thing I have is that on this Thursday, May first is the high school's academic achievement night.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee, seeing none. Continue on. We have an approval of the GoFan electronic ticketing system. Athletics, are we expecting Mr. McGee?
I thought Mr. McGee was, was scheduled to appear. Is he online?
Have the information.
Information's in your package. And I can go through it. I think he would do a better job.
We got faith, Gordon.
He's discussed uh, it with um, area athletic directors when they meet as athletic directors from PBIC. But basically what um, the proposal is, is to go from a uh, ticket purchased at the game or if they um, no, basically it's just the tickets at the game that would be changed and go to a, an online purchasing process through GoFan dot com. And we know that um, area schools uh, have already begun using it such as Agawam, Long Meadow, Ludlow, and Minichog and have had um, basically successful results. And um, the one element that if you look at the box that Mr. McGee put together there is that it does add a dollar processing fee. So he would recommend just raising our adult prices from five dollars to six dollars and our um, non-East Long Meadow resident seniors from three dollars to four dollars uh, to cover that processing fee. On the, the attached page.
Isn't it, I'm sorry Gordon, isn't it, it says published before the one dollar fee? So is he proposing seven and four with the fee? I mean, seven and five?
I think he's proposing six. I thought it was he was proposing six and four to cover the one dollar.
The, uh, the top line published price before.
Yeah, I do. I don't know if he talked to you about that.
I'm just saying, I did quickly text him here and asked him if he's coming. He said yes. So um, I'm asking him as he's on his way. Obviously, there was a misunderstanding at the time. So um, I, what I can tell you is that um, the surrounding districts and actually more and more, it's on my list service from all the business managers. More and more districts are using this and it's very, very successful for a lot of different reasons. This is just for the um, the gate receipts. Um, we won't have to um, have as many uh, workers. Um, it's gonna, you know, help save money that way. We did um, reach out to the town treasurer, John Fonte, because um, you know, there's an umbrella that, that this falls under and we have to make sure certain um, permissions and that, that she's okay with it. And we ended up uh, having a Zoom meeting. Uh, myself, uh, Dawn, Kevin was there as, and, and the, the sales rep for this and she answered all of Dawn's questions. Um, so she felt very good about that. I followed up with um, Don Fonte afterwards before bringing this forward to this committee to make sure that she was okay with it and did she have any additional questions? And she said, um, no, she was really looking forward to it um, to get it in place. So this is for next sports year. Um, we are going to, once the school year ends, uh, Kevin is gonna work earlier rather than later to get this set up so we can iron out any kind of kinks ahead of time and make sure that it's in place for when um, the sports do start back up in, you know, September. Um, so I'm sorry, I don't know if he's.
To, just to answer your question, as far as I understood it, if you look at the, the catch page, he's looking at proposing because we're at five and three, similar to Long Meadow, Agawam, West Springfield. And I understand that, I think that's um, this would cover it in terms of the six and four. I'm not sure why it's worded that way. But that was my understanding in discussing it with him, that it would um, introducing those increases would cover the dollar fee and.
Yeah, it says published price before the dollar fee.
Yeah.
The top there, sorry.
Doesn't that mean you add the dollar? No?
I think that's why he's proposing the six and four because we're actually five and three right now.
Okay, well, we'll.
Long Meadow is considering going up and considering going up in discussions because this is their first year with the GoFan.
Yep.
And they've been experiencing the dollar processing fee and so they're considering going up for next year as well.
Do we currently charge for JV soccer and best?
Um, basketball only if it, if they're getting there thirty minutes before the start time of the varsity game.
That's all this is though. He wants to change it to thirty minutes before JV. That's why I'm asking. I don't necessarily.
We don't charge with uh, for the JV game per se. We try to pick up the ones that are coming.
But is, is he proposing that we do?
He must be reducing it to, I don't know. Yeah, no, I see. Yeah, I don't.
Thirty minutes for JV start time was when tickets will be sold.
Right.
Sorry.
I don't believe he charges for JV.
I don't want to say that.
They opened up thirty minutes before.
No, they didn't, but I'm asking if he's proposing that because that's what it looks like.
That's his starting time of the ticket sale.
For varsity games.
Why would we start selling tickets half an hour before JV? That means you have to buy a ticket to get into JV. That's how I'm reading.
Oh, I was reading it that you, that's when you start to purchase tickets for varsity.
Half an hour before JV.
That's just when they're gonna open the sales.
Right.
I don't know.
But it doesn't make sense. Nobody comes to the game two hours ahead.
Sometimes they do.
Yeah, so let them in for free because they've made it to the JV game. That's what I'm saying, like JV.
But then they stay for the varsity.
I'm okay with that. Hey, there's a system.
High school kids, they were always free. All the kids.
That was uh, the committee made them free a couple of years ago.
Hmm. All the kids. I know we should see your citizens.
Yeah, we did that last year.
I remember the senior citizens.
All right, well, we need more clarifications. Why don't we jump to the uh, field trip on the bottom? Right, because we probably, I don't want to jump in the hearing in the third quarter. Take a couple of minutes right now.
Yeah, he's, I guess, as a way, he didn't respond. Oh, there he is. Perfect time. Thank you.
Hey, Kevin.
Sorry, pretty misunderstanding.
As I haven't done a uh.
Have a seat.
All right, here.
No, up front.
Yeah.
You're up. We're in. We're on it. No, five o'clock.
Oh, my gosh.
You're right on time.
Don't worry. So sorry.
No, no, no.
It's been that vacation week.
Coming out of executive session and I was trying to do proposal justice, but I don't think I've done a.
For some reason, I had this five thirty. I was at my son's baseball game at Heritage. I apologize.
No worries.
Sorry about that. So that's why I'm out of breath.
Ran all the way here from Heritage, huh?
Pretty much. Um, do you want me to start from the top?
Yeah, please. That would be helpful.
Um, so the goal here is for the athletic department to go to uh, all digital tickets. Other schools like Agawam, Long Meadow, Ludlow, Minichog. Uh, all of those schools have gone to digital tickets. Uh, we'd be probably the last school to go to digital tickets in the area. Um, some of them, sorry, as you can see, I'm catching my breath.
Take your time, Kevin.
I'm good. Thank you though. So some of the major changes from what we've done in the past is we would be looking for all East Long Meadow students to get um, free entry into sporting events. That was uh, feedback from the Athletic Leadership Council uh, from families in town.
Kevin, what do we currently do? Is it?
So currently, it's just student athletes that would get free entry. Uh, so that would be one of the major changes. Uh, it's a great place for them to spend a Friday night or Thursday night. Uh, I know that our athletes really appreciate when they come and support them. So that's one big change. Um, as far as the prices go, the prices are very similar to other schools. I believe you received um, a document with Minichog, Ludlow, Long Meadow, Agawam, West Springfield and what they charge. And we would be right in the middle of those schools. Um, a few of the other changes, just to make it an actual policy, where Berchley Park Middle School students would be able to attend if they're in rec uniform with a rec coach. They would be able to attend for free, but they'd have to be in uniform with that rec coach. Um, also uh, you know, kind of making an official that ELPS staff members, if they wear their badge, uh, supporting their students in their classes, be able to enter for free.
Kevin, did you say the six and the four is before the additional dollar?
Yes, so that, the way that GoFan works is anytime that there's a ticket transaction, GoFan would add a dollar to that fee. Uh, and that's a standard practice in all, all the local towns. There's a reason why we're going last to this and not first. Uh, and the reason for it is we wanted to see how it would go for Long Meadow, Minichog, Ludlow. Uh, all of the feedback has been great. Uh, people actually come to our games wishing that we could do digital tickets um, instead of the cash tickets. Um, we would be charging at all the same sports that we've charged in the past as far as varsity football, JV and varsity soccer, JV and varsity basketball. Um.
Kevin, we currently charge JV basketball?
So yeah, so the current, what we currently do is we charge for JV basketball thirty minutes before the start of the JV game for basketball. There would be a small change with soccer where we would charge thirty minutes before the JV soccer start time.
Because now we don't charge for JV soccer.
Correct. Uh, so.
Change.
Correct. That would be a change. Uh, it would be similar to other towns when there's a back-to-back JV varsity game at the turf field. Um, and it would be consistent with what we have done for twenty years with basketball where we charge for that JV game beforehand. Part of the reason for it is our ticket sellers or ticket takers, we put them in a really tough situation when somebody shows up thirty minutes into a JV game and they say that they're there just to watch the last twenty minutes of the JV game. It's tough for them to, you know, they don't want to let people in for free, but they also understand that somebody might be coming for those last fifteen, twenty minutes. So the consistency of charging for that JV game before it would make it very clear for our ticket takers.
When you say charge, if I may, charging for the game, they're paying for one game basically, but taking in the JV game and the varsity game.
Correct. And this would be what um, go, Minichogs are comparable um, school. They charge for any double headers on the turf. And they, they charge for lots of other sports too. What we charge for.
There are schools do not. They don't charge JV. They charge varsity, but they make a deadline as to halftime at JV, but there would be the exception if someone said, well, I'm just coming to watch the end of the game. My point is, I don't necessarily agree with the change to the JV because a lot of people don't go to that game, those games anyway because of the timing perhaps or whatever. And so the expectation is to not pay. And if the only reason is because a couple of stragglers coming late, I don't know, you know? I don't know what it feels.
So typically um, for a soccer game, if a, if a game starts at, JV game starts at five o'clock, that JV game is ending around six forty and the varsity game's starting at seven. So the alternative would be that we start selling thirty minutes before a varsity game and everybody that's in there gets to stay in for free. That would be different than what Minichog is currently doing.
Yeah. I prefer that personally, but I don't know how others feel on that. I do, I've always wanted as much participation as possible in terms of, and also fans showing up and watching the game. So JV um, not charging historically. Now to change that, I think we'll get less people coming and I don't think it's gonna be a huge ticket. And it's one more thing we're hitting the parents for as well. I don't know. It's a problem. Kevin, the other thing was the six and four, the um, ticket prices. Does that include the dollar fee or do you have that on top? So it would be seven and five.
So that would be before the dollar ticket fee.
Would be seven and five.
Correct. That would be the final, final price. Important. It would be the only high school that I'm aware of that every high school student gets in for free. Every senior resident that's sixty-two plus gets in for free. Um, I'm not aware of any other districts that are doing that and one way to offset that great benefit to our senior citizens who live in town and also our high school students. You know, there, there's, there's a financial loss there compared to other towns. So that's why I,
Right.
I'm kind of targeting us right in the middle of, of geographical.
Because do we sell in a year? Do you have any idea? Total.
Uh, so thirty thousand dollars is what we budget total for gate revenue.
At six, six dollars a ticket, so it's be five hundred spectators. That doesn't sound right.
Um, so we, we.
Five thousand.
Thousand.
Five thousand spectators. So if we, I mean, the reason why I ask is if we drop it a dollar, it's five thousand revenue. I just think seven's high. Again, I don't know what folks think about that.
Are we current at five and three?
We're current, currently at five and three. I believe we've been at five and three for over twenty years. Uh, and our transportation, uh, our transportation budget has doubled. Our equipment budget has doubled. And these ticket prices go directly to um, game officials, transportation uh, and um, those revolving account items.
Are there any provisions in place for students from um, Berchland who might not have a phone?
Yep, great question. So if we agreed to go with GoFan for digital ticketing, they would give us uh, point of sale devices that uh, they can purchase onsite. Their parents can purchase the tickets in advance. Uh, and uh, they can transfer them to them. Um, but they could do a point of sale with different uh, debit cards or credit cards.
Somebody gonna have to man that then?
So um, the great thing is if we go to digital tickets, we would be able to cut our operating costs significantly. Um, so we would always have a minimum of one person at the gate with a second person close by in case there was, in case they needed some support. So um, for those events, we'd always have two people there. In the past, we'd always have essentially a minimum of three people. So we're, we're able to cut out at least one person and for football games, we could potentially uh, reduce our operating costs by significantly more than that. And there's also the police department detail savings of going to digital tickets. So we're anticipating a police detail costing three hundred and ten dollars for officer next year. Uh, and we've always hired somebody when we've had a thousand dollars, fifteen hundred, two, two thousand dollars of cash onsite. We've always had a police detail there, but going to the digital tickets, we could um, the principal and I could look at the schedule and say, we definitely need a detail for these games. Certain games, we may not need a detail anymore. Of course, for football games, we would still hire at least two police details because it's such a large event. And there'd always be two police details for all football games minimum. Um, so it would give us more flexibility with, with that.
Questions, comments?
It's interesting for the committee to know that those prices have not gone up for so many years. Yes, in the twenty-plus years I've been here, it's been the same price.
Well, that's.
Yeah. Hey, I'm all about keeping the, the dollar amount down to get people in. So how are folks about the six and four versus five and three? Leave it? Change it? You're fine with, with the seven and five, I should say?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. What about the uh, JV soccer? Charge, no charge?
I do feel like it will sweep all that to go.
Yeah. So thirty minutes before varsity? We start selling tickets.
Or halftime JV.
You would recommend thirty minutes if we were to change it?
So the benefit of thirty minutes, even though we would lose money there, is there would be less conflict at the gate. If we did an hour before, there would be more conflict at the gate because people are showing up at halftime to watch the second half of a JV game and then we have a ticket taker there that's saying, I understand you're just here for the second half of the JV game, but it's our policy to start selling at X time. So whatever that time is, for the school committee to set that policy, it, it helps our ticket taker have that concrete policy.
The fine time.
Yeah.
I would be interested in that.
Oh, which one?
The thirty minutes before the start of the varsity game. And not charging for JV. Currently, we charge for JV basketball though, huh?
Correct. We've charged for JV basketball for the past twenty-plus years. And, and I, part of the reason too is there's that ten minute, ten to fifteen minutes between a JV game and a varsity game. For soccer, you're more at twenty to twenty-five minutes between JV and varsity.
Right.
There's a little bit more of a window in soccer than in basketball.
Maybe we could try it with the thirty minutes. Goes next year. And then any feedback that you give us, if you're like, oh, this works or you're like, does this is not working?
I think, I think the thirty minutes will work. I do think there'll be a financial benefit to charging for JV, but if, if the school committee says that financial benefit is not as important, then I, I, either one will work.
Okay, I would entertain then a motion if there aren't any other questions for the proposed athletic ticket sales. Including the prices uh, for tickets as listed with the one change of charging for varsity soccer beginning thirty minutes before start of varsity and not charging for JV soccer.
I'm just still pondering the middle schoolers who may not have a device.
Do they get a piece of paper? Is that what, or you say a point of sale? It's actually a digital device they type in when they get in.
Have to have a debit card on them.
Can't bring cash. So there would be no cash option. They do accept PayPal. Um, they would accept debit cards. Um, they could have a friend who has a phone. So it's, the platform is very easy for a parent to send a ticket through their friend, through, through their friend's phone.
Middle, middle schoolers have IDs, right?
They have IDs.
Why don't we just allow middle schoolers to come in for free? I mean, how much are we gonna make off of the middle schoolers?
Friday night football.
Friday night football.
But is that the right thing to do? I don't know.
I mean, we have been charging. I, I'm, I'm just trying to think like I don't want.
It's to not be able to come because they don't.
Because they don't have a phone.
Right.
And not every family makes the decision to have a sixth grader have a phone.
I mean, some, some districts don't allow middle school students without adult supervision. Say their games, so especially for football games, they require an adult to go in with their middle school student. So I understand that some middle school students wouldn't have a phone, but hopefully a parent would be bringing them and it could be as simple as the parent using their card and then the kid could go in from that point of sale. If we opened it up to all free middle schoolers with any, it would be challenging for us to navigate and it's already challenging the way it is for football games.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah.
What is the, what is the final decision on?
Yes.
Start time of ticket sales?
Thirty minutes before varsity soccer. No JV soccer. Rest is. What do you think, Emmanuel?
Wait, it's only for soccer except for basketball.
Sorry, yeah. You think that the money's not too much? Sorry?
I think the students get in for free, high school students.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
We'll get more students to show up.
Yeah, definitely.
Anyone have a motion?
I still, I'm, I'm stuck here. I'm actually more inclined to go with their suggestion and then we revisit it. Since they're the ones that are on the ground. They're the ones that are actually the ones taking the tickets and, and doing the, you know, we're, we're just talking about it from kind of a fifty thousand foot range. I'd rather see them try it and if it works, great. If it doesn't work, then we can revisit it and come back and make a change to it.
You want to charge for JV soccer?
I will, if that's what they, if, if the experts on the ground believe that that's what we should do, I, I'm kind of inclined to go with what they say for the first round.
I think it's hard to turn money away right now. If they're saying it's gonna generate revenue, if AD McGee is saying it's gonna generate revenue and it's gonna go into a revolving account and he's making a case for uh, transportation doubling and.
And.
Going up.
I was just gonna say the athletic, the, the overall athletic, I mean, continues and it, you know, everything goes up all inflation. It costs close to seven hundred thousand dollars to run that program. I don't think folks really maybe realize that. Um, yeah.
And I believe if they, if it doesn't work out, I believe they'll come back and say, this is not working. We might need to change it to a, maybe make a modification.
Well, I think that we would be missing, what we would be missing would be people coming to the games that would come if not for the price because JV historically has light attendance. And a, and a charge, family seven dollars per person, per game. You know, you're talking a couple hundred dollars per family to go to JV games. Historically, we haven't charged for that.
Is there any kind of discount? Like, I don't know, like a season?
So the season pass, season pass, they could purchase for sixty dollars.
Forty.
For adults, which would be good for the entire school year. Um, and if they could purchase in the winter at, at a reduced rate of forty dollars for the school year.
So it's just for adults. There's
uh, adults or students that are, students or seniors that are not East Long Meadow residents.
And this system is gonna provide a lot more data. You guys can see how many tickets you sell and, and track it.
Yes, it'll, yeah, the digital side will be um, really beneficial. I won't have to do as many spreadsheets. It'll be, make it very user-friendly for me to see what sports, it'll break stuff down for us with spreadsheets.
I love the cashless system.
We could technically be able to see how many tickets in, you know, very quickly, how many were selling in that thirty-minute span versus right now, it's just cash. And it's really hard to tell how many you sold thirty minutes, hour, or whatever the case may be.
The tricky part with it is a lot of families are gonna purchase their tickets the day before.
Ahead of time.
Or, or possibly three days before. Um, the system gives easy refunds if there was a rain out or something like that. So lots of families will purchase the day before or a couple of days before. So it will be tough to determine, but you know, typically at a JV game, you're probably seeing, you're probably seeing at a JV soccer game somewhere between fifty and seventy spectators from the start. Uh, so that's two hundred and, three hundred dollars per game.
Six, six home games.
Eight or nine at the JV level.
Yeah.
So times two, eighteen, three. I think you, you hit it on the head at the beginning, four, five thousand dollars.
Yeah, he's quick.
Yeah, you, you did all the math ahead of time. It would be about four or five thousand dollars. I do think it's important to know that other districts are now doing that. They didn't always do that. Um, back when your kids played, they weren't necessarily charging for JV soccer games, but they are now.
And I remember how nice that was because it is only, it's not say only JV, but it's not varsity. The reason why we charge varsity is because of varsity sport.
Is there a way to charge less for a JV game or does that complicate things?
Yeah, would, part of the reason why we had suggested the sell before the JV game is it eliminates that conflict with the person that's handle, that's working in the gate uh, for that person who shows up at halftime or shows up during the last fifteen minutes of the JV game. So it eliminates that conflict. But we can set a time of thirty minutes or an hour and then we just say this is the East Long Meadow school policy.
And I think if that was that prevalent, we could, we could get drastic and clear out and then let everybody back in, no?
In that amount of time. So let me give you a couple of good examples. Had multiple situations where parents come in and they say they're just watching the end of the JV game and forty-five minutes later, they're watching the varsity game. And our ticket sellers are trying the best that they can. And then the ticket seller, or if there's a police detail on duty, typically they'll say, hey, you know, I don't want to be difficult, but you did say you were just standing for the JV game. And there's been that conflict at multiple games this year. So we're trying to make that easier for the person who's working the gate.
And you're also trying to reduce the presence of the police details in a cost-saving manner. So now you'd be putting that potentially ticket seller in a various situation if there's also not a police detail to offer that support.
How much does it happen really? Like eight times a year, eight people, but like that's what I'm saying. Should we change the whole policy because those? I think people are relatively trustworthy to say, I listen, my kid is playing JV. It's the last fifteen minutes. I just going to watch the fifteen minutes and not pay the ticket price. I don't know. Maybe I'm just naive.
I just don't want to put the kids in a difficult space to have to make that decision.
The kids, did we say?
Uh, so it's actually staff members.
Yeah. Now you have less detail there. Again, I'm I'm more apt to to let them try the way they think they it works. And if it doesn't, they'll come back and say it's not working. And this is what you guys are recommend.
Yeah, so Mr. Page and I reviewed this in advance. We were on the same page. We both agreed on it. With, I I think most of the changes are actually really beneficial to the town and to the community with all high school students getting in free, all residents. There's lots of benefits here.
I take a motion from someone. Who wants to go there?
I move to approve the ELPS school committee policy for ELHS athletic ticket sales as presented.
Second.
Second by, any other discussion? Nay, motion carries for the one. Kevin, good luck with this.
I am so sorry that for some reason I thought it started.
Last week was, or two weeks ago was five thirty. Don't worry, we know how to find you. Alright, thanks for running here from Heritage Park.
No problem. Back to the game.
See you, Kevin.
Review mini packets have been out of the slide. It's also on the screens around the room. And it's being shown anybody who's following along on. For those who have been taking a look at school committee meetings really since January, a lot of what you'll see in the slides that are forthcoming, just outlines and summarizes how we've gone through the process of developing the budget for FY twenty twenty-six. All of this is in line with how we're trying to best support the whole child academically, socially and emotionally. And this year we've had that increased focus on building community and belonging. In doing so, over the last two years with budgets, actually three years in terms of introducing new curricula, especially in literacy and math, we have seen some movement and we're seeing success such as, you know, criterion reference percentage. Some of this you've seen in the fall, but I don't know if the public necessarily tuned in. We moved from fifty-one percent to seventy percent, which basically puts us firmly in substantial progress on targets. We had two schools recognized for their movement on the DESI targets. That's Maple Shade and the High School. That's two out of only fifty-seven that were recognized by DESI based on that movement on targets. Some of the reporting that you've seen us do around student climate surveys. That's in alignment with how our goals are organized and we're seeing good results. Ninety-two percent of our students report having supportive relationships. Ninety percent reports, this is looking at basically grades three through twelve. Ninety percent report their school is inclusive of all students and eighty-eight point five are reporting feeling that they are part of their school community. Some of the things that we highlighted are some of the achievements that we highlighted as we were talking about the Student Opportunity Act. You see, and I won't go through each of the bullet points, but that some of our media students are making strides over the last few years, some of the changes that we've made on professional development. But also as we continue to become better at implementing some of the new curriculum we've talked about. And this would be folks like our ELL students, our students are on IEPs and have learning disabilities and some of our other subgroups as you go down that list.
When you make mention of provided support, is that specific around the professional development?
In the professional development, there's elements that talk about how they not only access reports, but also look at you know, challenges that students might be dealing with and how we can circumvent that and engage it. That's, we've done a lot of specific professional development around these two literacy program and the math program.
And based on the attendance records that we saw this year for number of staff attending professional development, it was not where I think anyone on the committee would like to see it.
Not where we would like to see it either.
Are we going to have then a mechanism by which to progress monitor impact that educators who are attending the professional development are therefore having on student achievement? Because if we're going to say that that's something that we're excited about, then we have to ensure that we're seeing that us providing a support to our educators is therefore translating to impact in student achievement.
You can always progress monitor down to the individual level, whether it be MCAS or iReady. How much that correlates attendance and so forth, that's that's not as easily derived, but you certainly can always, and those are things that are being looked at, especially when they are in collaboration, excuse me, common planning time, where they're starting to look at scores and movement of students in their classes.
I think that's something that as a a committee, we should really be looking to have when we think about our data meetings, is that the individual principals loop that in to their data presentations. Teacher attendance, teacher attendance on professional development days and how then that's being used to actually change the course of instruction within the classroom so that we are actualizing what we're saying here in terms of supporting the whole child academically, socially and emotionally, because those PD offerings encompass all three. And if we're not having a strong presence, how are we then holding true to where we're placing money? If folks aren't necessarily in attendance on those days and that should be something that when we have those slide decks, that the principals prepare. That should be a function of it. What is the average attendance and are you noticing changes in teacher practice as a result of of them attending the professional development that's been provided?
We can, I mean, we can certainly provide attendance data. It would be harder to provide an actual percentage as to how much attendance on that professional development impacted student achievement. But we certainly can start to have those.
Can start to have.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not causation, but correlation.
Right.
If you see a teacher who's attended all three and their scores are substantially higher, then that's correlative data, not causational data.
Right.
And we can start to look at that.
I think if administrators know ahead of time that this data will be coming to the school committee, perhaps we'll pressure on more staff to attend.
Yeah, I mean. I mean, it's also, you're also able to go in and do learning walks and collect data that way.
Which is what, what we are doing, doing learning walks and then that gets discussed in common planning time.
So that's also data, maybe that could be presented in in those data meetings that, I mean, these educators received PD on this and then we, we went back and looked at in their classrooms and this many educators were using this or they've seen some kind of change in the educator's instruction.
Right. And actually, if you remember last year, specifically with some of the math professional development, that was spoken to in terms of the presentations at the end of the year, in terms of how not only the PD day worked, but then follow-ups in seeing those new skills or new strategies being implemented. We can certainly add to that. I say this in every budget hearing, but we do know it's true that a system's budget is the most strategic factor to impact every student's success in reaching his or her full potential while allowing the district to meet its goals for all students. One of the very apparent situations, challenges, however we want to characterize it, is that education is becoming more costly. A survey that I believe goes out to all business managers asking them what, this is probably went out somewhere in January and February, what was their initial budget request? The districts here are representative Western Mass districts as well as the DESI DART districts. Those are the districts that DESI feels are most comparable to East Long Meadow. And so just going down, you can see that, you know, even when we reduce to four point nine nine percent after level one, we're basically in the mix of that average of four point nine, but you have highs of ten point two five and you have lows of right around three percent. But everybody's struggling, all districts are struggling with these increase in costs. Some of the reasons why, if you just look at end of the year inflation rate, so these are the the rates published at the end of a given fiscal year, twenty twenty-two, if you go back to twenty twenty-one, it was even higher. A twenty twenty-two, six point five percent was the final inflation rate for twenty twenty-two. Three point four percent was the final rate for twenty twenty-three and two point nine percent last year for twenty twenty-four. So that's where costs of goods and the cost of living is going. Then you have the Massachusetts Operational Services Division that every year looks at and gives a cap, if you will, of how much district education, educational providers increase their tuition. Last two fiscal years, the one we're currently in, in the previous October, they allowed that to be the add district tuitions to be increased by four point six nine percent. And then this current one that's projected for next year, this October, they are looking or have allowed for three point six seven percent. So added district tuitions are able to rise to the level of that cap most due. I think Ms. Flair would.
Yeah, totally agree.
Three years ago, that actually was fourteen percent, but we were also dealing with all out of district providers being capped where they could not increase their their percentage through the COVID years. And at least one year after that, we also were dealing with the ESER grants, all district had ESER grants. There was some balancing around that, but fourteen percent, if you go back three years, four point six nine percent, three point six seven percent. However, the chapter seventy formula in those same two years, although it has the ability to have an inflation adjustment capped up at four point five percent, it was only increased one point three five percent for inflation or adjusted for inflation. And next year, project, projected to be adjusted by one point nine three percent. Our chapter seventy increased the amount that East Long Meadow receives through state aid, the chapter seventy formula. Increased last year for this time, this year by one point seven five percent and is projected to increase next year by one point two percent. So we're we're behind. If they're allowing out of district tuition to go up at those rates and inflation has already increased the cost of living by a certain amount. The unfortunate thing is that we're not keeping up with those those percentages. That then has an impact and I did look for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Unfortunately, when I had to have this up on the webpage, because you do need to publicize the slides that you're reviewing for for the budget hearing. DESI only has published, or at least at that time, FY twenty twenty-three. So this gives you a little bit of a historical look. It doesn't give you FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five where we currently are. But you can see where, sort of where we stand in the LPVC in terms of per pupil expenditure. The state averages twenty-one million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand in fiscal year twenty-three. We were at nineteen, excuse me, twenty-one, did I say twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand? Yeah, sorry. And East Long Meadow was at nineteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And you can see, we had a gradual increase over those three years as many districts did. But it kind of puts us right in the middle of the pack of the LPVC districts. And then if you look at the DESI DART districts and somewhat in the middle of the pack in terms of districts that DESI feels that we are, DESI being the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, I apologize. I know all of you know that. I'm not sure that all the viewers always know that. So you see that while per pupil expenditure continues to increase for East Long Meadow and we are investing in our students, we're not at the top of either list and we're not at the bottom of either list. In terms of how increases to the overall budget have resulted over the fiscal years going back to twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-six. See that there were four, including this going into next year, four times where unfortunately we've had to reduce positions in order to meet what the town has been asking of us. And the town, when I say that, the town has always supported the East Long Meadow Public Schools and Education and certainly are meeting well beyond their net school spendery. When a budget traditionally only increases in the one percent or just under two percent range, that's always where we've struggled. Now, this year where we're making a request of two point five percent, we're still struggling to stay within that budget. And so therefore we're reducing nineteen positions to date. Just to give you an idea, and we have talked about this as a school committee and we've talked about this at town council meetings. But it's been a long process. It started in December and is now starting to conclude as we approach May. A true level services budget, if you are just moving all programming and staff forward is actually upwards of eight point five seven percent or over three million dollars. We've worked since January into April to reduce that request two point five percent. The first thing the school committee did was really look at how can we change how we're utilizing certain funding that we know will have in our budget next year? Some of that is existing line items such as the renewal, curriculum renewal cycle. And some of that is looking at ways to generate new revenue. One of the ways that had not been utilized before and will have a short window of opportunity is utilizing school choice funds. We basically had a revolving account that had built up a surplus. And that has enabled us to use those school choice funds to cover deficits, not only in this current budget, but projected deficits as we look at next year's budget. And if you look down that list, it's upwards of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that are going to be injected. And you won't have that same type of funding, even though you've added additional school choice seats next year, which I think was a good move. We just will no longer have the surplus. So those are challenges that will remain. However, in doing all of this. However, in doing all of this that's on the screen, um, those eight items, that did reduce the request by eight hundred and twenty-two thousand eight, uh, five hundred dollars.
There were other opportunities too to increase revenue. I think that we should at least make mention of, there were other opportunities for MOUs. But the membership of the ELA, ELEA did not vote in favor of those. So I think when we talk about reduction in workforce, there were other ways by which we could have gone that were not uh seen as viable by other bargaining members of, of the community. So when we.
Right. The ELEA did collaborate on two MOUs that raised thirty-six thousand, but ultimately did not uh vote to pursue another MOU regarding um.
Professional Development.
Reducing one of the professional development.
That was how much money?
I believe it was, remember?
Oh my gosh, there's too many numbers in my head.
It was upwards of over a hundred thousand.
About a hundred and twenty-six thousand.
That sounds right.
There also were other things that the school committee um looked at, which was raising the transportation fund, which um ul- ultimately was not voted into place. So this was a real look at how do we bring new funding to this picture and um utilize funding at least for a year differently that exists in the budget. And it, it did impact um by eight hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, uh, reducing the request. However, to get to five percent, uh, we did have to by six positions at that first round. And then to get to two point five percent, uh, which was ultimately in discussions with the town manager and the school committee needed to submit a budget request um to the town manager by April first. There was a vote to meet that two point five percent recommendation that the town manager was endorsing in his draft budget. Ultimately then, um, two meetings or at least one meeting, school committee meeting, was a determination of all the positions that um would need to be reduced to make it to the two point five percent. So it ended up being two district academic instructional coaches, uh, a Latin teacher, uh, at the, these are positions now, obviously not individuals, although individuals are in those positions. An English position, the uh high school tech ed slash engineering position, a Burchland Park Intervention Coordinator, a Burchland Park Computer Science Teacher, one elementary art teacher, and so they'll, we'll go back to a shared model of teaching arts between at least our three through five schools, two elementary enrichment teachers, a um Maple Shade fifth grade teacher position, uh, a Maple, excuse me, Mountain View fifth grade teaching position, three Meadow Brook, Brook reading specialists, a Meadow Brook preschool teacher and three paraprofessionals.
And those were also made in conjunction with recommendations from the leadership team.
Absolutely.
So just making sure that these weren't arbitrary.
Nope, these were based on all the recommendations and it's, it's a challenging process.
Agreed.
Emotional process, it's emotional for everyone um that then sees letters. Uh, but yes, no, there was a, an incredible amount of discussion, that's a very good point, between January and April in order to make these final decisions.
And for those conversations of this committee as well, to ensure that when we look at this list, anytime we have a reduction in force, obviously there's an impact on students, but we try to hold true to not touching positions that were core classroom educators in holding true to the integrity of the Massachusetts state standards and being able to ensure access to those because that is ultimately what we're accountable to support.
So just to sort of summarize the whole process, uh, level services was that eight point five seven percent increase or over three million dollars. Then all of those discussions took place to move from eight point five seven to a two point five percent request. And so that total, that entailed reducing the request by two million one hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. That then was a budget request for thirty-six million eight hundred and ninety-five thousand and four dollars. Uh, one of the things that we've done over the years is going from this request to that, that if in uh ultimately, ultimately supported town council, would be our operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. However, it's not the full cost of everything that we run. Why we always do a whole picture slide. Other funding sources come in and ultimately are utilized to move ELPS forward. And so you see all the grants listed there that um Ms. Flair um highlights in her updates, our quarterly updates, but also this, our monthly updates this year, Title One, Title Two A, um, Title Four. Then we have um early childhood grants, which are a little bit smaller and um grants such as our comprehensive health grant, that's where the family coordinator is, uh, part-time family coordinator is paid for out of. We were talking about that earlier in terms of attendance goals and so forth for students. Echo Grant, Special Education IDEA is, is a huge grant that helps us with uh out of district tuitions. And um we include the East Long Meadow Educational Endowment Fund. That actually, that funds many grants, if you will, um, and has been substantial over the years in terms of the outlay. But it doesn't necessarily cover, say, one program for fifty to four thousand, what it is are, you know, anywhere from, say, ten to fifteen grants um that have been applied for in the mini-grant application. And then the um East Long Meadow Educational Endowment Fund Board approves what out of those applications they're gonna support. Then we have revolving funds, um, and Mr. McGee was uh just speaking to that in terms of ticket sales, because that goes into the athletic revolving fund. And that's um something that's crucial to run our athletic program. If we did not have an athletic revolving account, um, the operational budget would fall far short. I believe we only budget, uh, only, I shouldn't say it that way because it's over five hundred thousand dollars, but the true cost of athletics is probably closer to seven or eight hundred thousand dollars. And that's where the athletic revolving fund comes in and supports. Uh, other revolving funds are preschool tuition, those would be for our peer role models, uh, transportation. Circuit Breaker is a state uh reimbursement formula that allows districts to um put in each year after they've expended on a student or student and it's um after they've met the thresholds of fifty-two thousand and.
Four hundred and nineteen dollars.
Four hundred and nineteen dollars. Eligible costs above that fifty-two thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars, we can apply to have them reimbursed up to seventy-five percent. We know that this year, even though they allowed for transportation, specialized transportation to be part of that circuit breaker um reimbursement application, they did not have enough money allotted to handle all of the transportation requests. So instead of seventy-five percent reimbursement, transportation this year was reimbursed at forty-four percent. So overall, when you add in all of these different revenue sources, the true um picture in terms of what it costs to run all these programs is closer to forty-one million one hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um, one of the things that we had talked about earlier, uh, prior to the open session was that Ms. Flair and I had uh last week met with the Financial Oversight Committee and many people have uh spoken to how much work has been done throughout the process in December from uh April. Working with the town manager, uh, the Municipal Finance Director and members of the town council, we're trying to informal meetings and had discussion around how we look at and fund, what, twenty-six. And so we always want to not only be fiscally responsible, but collaborate with the town and look at how we go through some of the challenges that presented to us this year, but will continue probably to be presented to us next year.
All right, excellent. About the budget process. You know, that's where. Anyhow, you doing on time? You got homework or anything?
Little bit.
Want to get going? Please feel free if you're, I know it's getting late already, so if you got a boogie, yeah. Um, okay, thank you Gordon for the budget hearing.
Sure.
We will move on then. We have the FY twenty-five third quarter financial report.
So in, in your packet, that's always, and of course we've been doing this monthly now, but this is a quarterly one as of March thirty-first, um, attached is a spreadsheet that is designed as a financial update for the FY twenty-five school budget as of March thirty-first. I'd like to remind you that this report also includes grants and revolving accounts. So if we go right to page six, right to the numbers, please, um, this is our operating budget here and on the top side are your uh salary side of the budget. And as you make your way down, I mean, um, nothing looks um out of the ordinary for me at this time of the year, um, the athletics, there's still, you know, the way that those are, are paid, as Mr. um McGee alluded to earlier, we have three different sports seasons, so the coaches are paid, you know, twice during the the season, so that's why you still see available balance there. Those are hourly employees and um, you know, I anticipate the bulk of that to be expended by year end. Uh, the nurses and medical staff, again, there's still um some available there, but many are hourly uh rates that, that fall under there. Clerical, um, there's not a whole lot there, there's contractual obligations that are paid out at year end for clerical, like longevity, things like that. So um, you have eighteen clerical um that fall under there, um, that can get eaten up pretty quickly. Uh, same thing with custodians, most of theirs is paid out throughout the year, but they have some things um that still get paid out at the end of the year. So I've highlighted in, I don't know if it, if your copy came out green or gray, but any of the gray line items are um line items that at this point in time I anticipate having a balance there. And we talked about this now for months now, uh, paraprofessionals, I see right now at March thirty-first, we have about fifty-two thousand dollars remaining there. I do anticipate we'll be able to transfer that and we'll probably do that at the next meeting. Which, this is already flipping over the calendar, right? So I'll be doing that in a couple of weeks, the next month. The, the line right below it is, is a few different items, the bulk of that is retirement there. So I do anticipate um most of that, um, not all of that, but most of that will be able to um help offset any of the um blue line items that I had um below. The teacher's line item also is showing eighty-four thousand um remaining there for odds and ends of reasons, leave of absences, change in positions, um, this is not an uncommon thing to see. I anticipate the bulk of that will be able to help offset. Uh, one thing I am seeing in the salary side um in this month that I wasn't seeing last month was that substitutes are, are showing a deficit of eighteen thousand six thirty-three, which I hadn't seen, um, you know, prior to this. You'll see the line below it, the permanent building sub, um, that does have forty-six thousand. Neither of these line items are um usually encumbered, I see a small amount there, I'm not sure, might be a long-term subs that's encumbered there. So, you know, we're going to continue to see the permanent building sub um be expended down, but I'm also gonna see that sub line expended as well.
Has that, has that run in the red before?
No, not, not like, not like this because I'm not sure, I'd have to do some more investigation.
More subs is here?
Uh, maybe we need more subs, it's not, it's not, yeah, it's, we need them, we have some, lots of uh leave of absences. I can get you that um information for the next meeting.
You should look year over year in terms of absences, yeah.
Yep, absences, um.
And then that will get larger, that deficit you.
This is definitely gonna get larger, yes, because we still have a few months here to cover for subs. So, you know, just giving you a heads up um about that. I do anticipate, if you look at those lines above there that I highlighted, we're going to have plenty to be able to cover to offset that. So I'm not concerned about it, um, but I, I did not budget any more for next year than I did this year, so it is something we're gonna have to look at into next year as well, just to let you know. And um, are there any questions? The only other thing I want to mention is on the professional development, that contractual date that's written right in, the Unit A um contract is that all professional development POs must be in by April thirtieth, so that's this week. So, you know, any funds that are remaining there, there's, you know, maybe I'll end up like with twenty thousand or so there um in that line item. Any questions on the salary side before I move on? So the bottom side of the spreadsheet is your expense side of the operating budget and all the lines of, you know, in, in order. Again, I highlighted that out of district tuitions is showing as of March thirty-first, two hundred and thirty-six thousand deficit there, which we've been um talking about, but can I also make mention that this changes or can change day to day? I just got an email um today, which was a pleasant surprise, instead of something going needing to be spent, this was actually uh money that we were reducing a PO by seventeen thousand dollars because behind the scenes, things can change. If um Desi determines a student is actually the financial responsibility of another district, so, you know, or it could be the opposite that it, that they determined that we are. So this was a nice surprise, so hopefully you'll see that go down next month, um, a little bit there. The educational supplies, we're showing two hundred thousand dollars available there. And again, that was intentional reminder, we do have a freeze on the supply budget lines um and are only processing essential purchases. So that will offset the line above there that's in the deficit. I am confident that we'll be able to transfer funds to cover uh those two potential deficit lines.
And you said you want to do that next meeting?
I, I, I believe so, I'm, yeah, I'm getting in a much more confident, as I said, confident place to be able to say, yep, we can move, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand from here to there and um, so we'll need to set a.
Find a sub or waiting for, we'll just set it with the agenda meeting.
Sure. So I'll have those ready to start and then of course, at the end of the year, we'll do any final ones as we get more um close to the end of the year, but these we definitely want to um, and I'll try to, yeah, and I'll, and I'll look back at some of the, the sub history as well to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn on that, but um, yeah.
And if, if we do get some or absence information, maybe we can break it down by school if that's possible, just to look.
See what I can do.
Something's happening. In the red, we have a lot of subs this year.
Yeah. So, okay, we'll go over to the next page if no one has the questions there and that is your uh grants are on this page. Up at the top, I put all of the prior year grants, because as you know, um, we can roll over grants. So these are ones, um, you'll see the ESR there, that is, has, I, it has been, uh, the playground has been hydro-seeded. So now we're just in the process of letting that grow a little bit. Renee, uh, Principal Renee Lodi has put out um a letter to her staff and they're going to um, starting this week, rotate it to let the kids get out there. But again, we have to be careful because you don't want to destroy the seating that just went out because it will, the kids trampling us. We have to, we have to, it's a slow rollout, but she has started it and next week she's on, so I believe it's Thursday or Friday of this week. One class at a time is going to go out and then the following week, she has uh it rolling out where it's more, it is more for the preschoolers and the students that have disabilities, because that is what this playground was really geared towards. So, uh, but anyways, this is exciting.
Get it going Pam, like, come on.
Very exciting news. Uh, so as you make your way down, those prior year will all be expended um by year end. Then you've got your federal grants and as um Mr. Smith alluded to earlier, you have your entitled grants, entitlement grants, which are ones we basically get every year, we haven't heard anything other than we are going to get them so far. The Title One, Title Two, Title Four, Special Ed IDEA, the bulk of that is um, Mrs. Smith said was for out of district tuitions. Early childhood, half portion of um early childhood teacher, uh, special ed program improvement, that was a new grant that last month I believe you approved and that grant actually goes through a little different than the ones above it, that goes through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five, which is intentional because if you're going to try to improve things and they just came out with a grant, you need time to do that. So they're allowing over the summer. I know our um, our new student services director Jenny has hired um folks that are on a committee and are, are diving into this work already. So um, that's why you only see a small amount there, the stipends um are gonna be paid until the work is done. So um, anyways, we're excited about that. On the, but the next grants are your state grants and that's um the DPH grant, the MECO grant. I do want to bring to your. I do want to bring to your attention, and I do need it to be voted on, that the Metco grant has an increase of nine thousand, six hundred, nine dollars. So that brings that grant to three hundred fifty four thousand, two sixty four. The other two grants, those are the consortium grants that we're working on with Springfield as the lead, lead district. And lastly is the private grant there, the Klee ELAP, which I told you last month that it was terminated effective two ten. We're just finishing up the end items and that will be closed out. So, you know, all grants are in line to where they should be at this point in the year. I don't see any concerns. Does anyone have any questions on any grants?
No, I just, when we talk about the, going back six for a second, we're thinking about out of district. They spent in tuitions.
Yep.
Is that summer work between the Director of Student Services and the Director of Curriculum in terms of streamlining and really putting into practice a more uniform MTSS structures that we can really evaluate that what's happening at one campus is happening at another so that we're able to make sure that we are working effectively to reduce the amount of students who need to leave East Long Meadow to receive the services that are in alignment with their IEPs.
So that's the work that the that Mrs. Blair was referring to with that committee. And then that would continue, obviously, into the summer regarding that. What they're looking at now, not so much with that committee, but I think the committee will be part of it, is looking at since the ETLs, Educational Team Leaders, for the first time have been utilized this year, we changed to that model this year. Now, instead of, say, forty five special education liaisons, when you look at all our special education teachers, writing IEPs and amending IEPs after annual meetings and so forth, that's happening with four individuals predominantly. There are still out of district meetings that are attended by facilitators and school psychs that might write those IEPs. But they're looking at how services are delivered across the district and trying to make that more uniform so that we can make those type of changes. Not just with out of district students that might be on that pathway or at least being considered for that pathway, but for all students. Because a lot of this begins as students enter preschool in terms of how and we had put in a lot of emphasis back when we changed our preschool model now probably four years ago around looking at how teams were meeting with families and we're getting back to that. Looking that again, but taking that across the district.
And then I think similarly to what Greg mentioned and what I mentioned about attendance, I think looking at year over year attendance rates for staff, we often look during our meetings at student attendance, but we have not yet looked at staff attendance during those. Because we have to be honest that there's a financial and educational impact because now when we pay a sub and we still pay for an educator who's out, we're paying twice, but not, students aren't receiving the same quality of education. So we need to be able to really look at that, especially given that we have permanent building subs. That means we're using the permanent building sub and we're running in the red based on what we've allotted for sub line this year. So being able to have those year over year attendance rates, I think is going to be critical because there's a definite educational impact when we don't have licensed educators in front of our students.
Okay. See what we can get for you. Revolving page, sorry.
Medco grant, though, you want us to do that? We can go ahead. Yep, okay, yep.
Are the revolving accounts. Athletic revolving, again, I just wanted to bring to your attention that as of right now, I see it in as a deficit. But I also know that there's projected revenue there that has not hit the general ledger yet from user fees and and gate receipts. It takes a while for it to be collected, handed in, and then it goes through the the town's process. And although it's posted, it's not really posted until it kind of goes through like this mini audit within the system. I hope that makes sense. So you don't see things right away. It can take a little longer to see things. So I anticipate we're going to be in the red, I mean, I'm sorry, in the black at the end of the year. Not a huge balance like I would like to see there, but I do see it going in the the positive. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, the tuition revolving account. So, you know, there's two hundred and eighteen thousand dollar potential balance in there. An intentional plan to help offset the FY twenty six budget. As we talked about, there are positions in there, paraprofessionals as well as teachers that are going to be funded from there. The next one is the circuit breaker. As reported earlier, in an earlier financial update, I think it was a few months back, there was a circuit breaker audit done in the fall on the prior year's circuit breaker claim. And in early November, we were notified by Desi that there would be a reduction totaling thirty nine thousand, six hundred, forty dollars due to the audit. Therefore, we're now seeing this reduction in the third and fourth quarter payments that are being reduced from four hundred thirty one, five forty eight to now four eleven, seven two nine each. So I hope that makes sense. So what do I see that we are going to, we still have two quarters coming in, that's the third and the fourth. So that's a revenue of eight hundred twenty three thousand. I still anticipate about four hundred thousand being able to be rolled over, which is basically that fourth quarter payment for circuit breaker. Does that make sense? Transportation revolving, right below it, that that is showing a balance of sixty thousand dollars. I wanted to remind everyone that we use those revenues to help offset the budget. So about a hundred thousand dollars goes back in to help pay the transportation costs. Put a plug out there. We are opening up the FY twenty six bus registration this week. Folks will be getting a reminder through some type of communication over the phone. Yes, what is, I was going to say, thank you, school messenger. So we'll be sending that out later and also the parents will be getting an email, I believe, from each of the schools. They're going to send it out to the, just kind of reminding folks that it is an online process. It went very well last year. I anticipated going even better this year now that folks know that they have to go through like our school account. And so that revenue there, you will see increase because obviously we start to collect the revenue for next year at the end of this year. And then that will offset next year's expenditures. The last one that I just kind of wanted to mention was the school choice account. You'll see we have additional eighty thousand dollars coming in revenue and that's the monthly amount of twenty eight, three twenty seven has been reduced to sixteen thousand, sixty nine due to enrollment changes. There were five payments remaining. So in the beginning of the school year, they always go by whatever the number was for last year, like, you know, carried over. And then once the audit happens and changes happen, now they rectify it. And they rectify it on the other half of the year. So that's why we see sixteen thousand, sixty nine dollar. I'm sorry, the the new amount of sixteen thousand, sixty nine dollars instead of the twenty eight thousand per month. So in the end, I believe we will roll over about four hundred thousand in the school choice, which again is as intentional as we can get to try to build that up as much as we can to help offset next year. Are there any questions on anything?
Pam, the school lunch, the nine thirteen versus the nine forty nine revenue versus expended twenty five. Is that an accounting issue based?
It is because again, the same thing.
That'll count that revenue this year, even though it's for next year's.
Maybe, what is your, I'm sorry, maybe I missed something.
So the revenue is lower than the expended already. Right, the nine thirteen?
Yeah.
Lower than the nine forty nine. But are we getting more revenue to offset the expended?
Yes.
So at the end of the school year, that will be more revenue than expended or.
Yes, that's correct.
And then also noticing on the student mobile tech insurance, right on the money, revenue versus expended for students, but staff this year was almost double expended versus revenue. Are we going to address that next year with them?
So, well, we're already kind of addressing it now with them because just as a reminder to folks, the staff mobile technology repairs, those funds come from the ELEA.
Right.
Writing a check and they just wrote me a check for, not me personally, you know how that goes. They just wrote a check for, I believe it was a thousand dollars. So I just deposited that last week or this week. It'll be going in. So again, you're not going to see that, correct.
But they always make it up if they're low, they make it up.
They do because we're we're not going to purchase. So so how it works is Ryan will reach out to me with an email and he'll include, you know, ELEA officers saying, so I need to order five more screens because I don't have any in stock or I only have one. Because you don't want to not have any, right? You want to be able to get the teachers up and going as quick as possible. And they asked me to wait on it because I think that they had already put out like fifteen hundred and for whatever reason. So there's always that communication happening. And then when I came back to my office after being off for a day, there was a check sitting there. So then I deposited, then I reached out to Ryan to say, so now we have fifteen hundred dollars. Do you want to, do you want to order two or three screens? And then we start working on that. But they're well aware that that's what they have there. And we also, they're keeping track of, you know, which teachers there are. So if there's any repeat offenders. But of course, this is supposed to be for accidents, right? So, so yes, we are on top of that.
Okay. Questions? Any other questions?
As I ended, I always like to remind you, it's important to remember that these balances are snapshot in time and are changing constantly. Thank you.
Motion to accept the nine thousand, six hundred and nine dollar increase for the FY twenty five Metco grant. Motion made by Sarah. Second by William. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Motion to accept the third quarter FY twenty five financial report, please. Motion made by Sarah. Second by William. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Thank you, Pam.
Welcome. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we have approval of a Nissan High School Life Skills and Transition Special Education Program Field Trip to the Connecticut Science Center on June fourth.
In your package, you have a a cover letter from Mr. Scoville, who's one of our special education teachers here at the high school. And we're looking to take nine students from the Life Skills and Transitional Special Education Programs to the Connecticut Science Center in June, on June fourth. And staff from those two programs would be accompanying them.
Does that include the nurses as well?
With the students, yes, it would be.
It is June fourth, right? Because the, this says June fifth. Wednesday is the fourth.
Yeah, Wednesday, the fourth, I believe, is when they are leaving.
The Science Center. They might want to follow up on that, though. Make sure they know they're coming on the right day.
Yeah, so that's what they reserved.
He does say Wednesday, the fourth. I would think it was the Thursday they would have known.
We'll double check that.
Yeah, let's approve it for Wednesday. We're back in before then, so we have to change every week.
Okay.
I take a motion for Wednesday, June fourth.
I just have one last question. The facility is obviously accessible for students in this program. It has all
Yes.
Their needs will be met in terms of.
They have all the accessibility too, so that they can access these different exhibits and experiences.
Any other questions? On the motion.
To approve the ELS Life Skills and Transitional Special Education Field Trip to the Connecticut Science Center on June fourth, twenty twenty three.
Second. Motion made by Amy, Amy seconded by William. Any discussion? You'll just double check that?
I'll double check it, yep.
If you want to check the science, I mean, really, that's what I'm.
Yeah, it looks like their reservation is for the fifth.
Yeah. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Finally, we have a request.
In your package, you have a number of attachments all around East Long Meadow, excuse me, Youth Softball. Their group has gone out and gotten fourteen different businesses around the area who are interested in not only supporting, obviously, East Long Meadow softball, but would like to purchase, in this case, what would be banner signs hanging on over the outfield fence. And so, as you can see from the the different applications, they're looking to go from the start of this season, which started in April. Fall season, there is a hiatus, I believe, in there and partial hiatus in summer months. It's also my understanding that the banners go up before the game and then come down after the game or store for the next game.
And I'd like to specify that in the motion because that's a requirement for me at least. And not leave them up for this.
Is that what they said? That's the practice.
That's our understanding.
Oh.
Operating on now.
Here to, they are stored facility and families take on the responsibility of placing them up prior to the game and then removing them at the conclusion of the game.
Oh, so early up during the game.
Yeah.
The request is for two seasons, the spring and the fall. Committee's desire to allow for both seasons or one season at a time. Or present a question if we go too far out. Oops. But only one season. Like there's fourteen banners that they're going to put up. Of course, we're always thankful.
I'm fine with letting them stay up till the fall through that season. I think first organization that's come forward and completed the process as asked provide images of all of the logos that were going to be going up.
Yeah, when I first saw this, I was worried that they were going to leave them, asking to leave them up for the eight months. I don't know that that was the intention of this committee to allow that to be, you know, similar to Picknelly Field. But if they're, the understanding is that they put them up for the game, take them down at the end of the game.
Yeah, they're not permanently affixed. They use bungee cords, I believe.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think they're.
I'm okay with it, yeah. But I would, like I said, I'd like to specify that in the motion that they will go up and come down, beginning and ending during the game. Correct.
I know you softball advertising proposal, the understanding that the individual or companies, whoever, will be taking their banners down at the end of every game and that we won't be allowing for two seasons.
Yep, the spring and the fall. Okay, motion made by Amy.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Discussion.
I just think it's important to note that the money's going back. The advertisers' money is very clear and very apparent, like going back into the program, the birchland and the development. Nice to see the advertisers' funds being invested in the program and also benefiting our high school students right now.
Yeah.
That's what they're playing.
Yeah. Any other discussion? And all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Nay, that carries five to zero. Okay, without further motion made by Antonella. Second by William. A special shout out to Antonella for, through the meeting.
Yes.
All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. That carries five to zero. Thank you.